Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order, City of Lawrence Common Council, September 4th, 2018. Meeting is now in session. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, living, infinite, and just for all.
Father, we come before you tonight in our humble ways and we ask, Lord, that your blessing be upon us. We ask that you give us guidance and, Lord, I pray that words that we use in the meditation of our heart always be acceptable in your sight. In your name I ask this. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we have a quorum. Comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions.
Madam President.
Yes, Counsel Freeman.
I have a couple of issues. I just got an email from one of my constituents on West Hill Drive about the tasting of the chlorine in the water. And I emailed the, forwarded the email to Scott Sinsberry and he's supposed to be getting back with me and checking and taking samples from this area. And also, there's commercial vacant lots that I have been complaining about off and on. I do believe one of the lots is at 11060 Pendleton Pike and that is owned by Sunnyside Market Centra LLC. And the other one is 11134 Pendleton Pike and I believe that's owned by the same party owners. And then 11135 Pendleton Pike is owned by Man Realty. The lot has a lot of weeds, high grass, and it needs to be tackled and dealt with. I don't know if the city administration can do anything about it, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel Freeman. Any other counselors?
Madam President.
Yes, Counsel Parker.
Yeah, I would just, a while back, we received an email from Chief Hoffman and it was about a cleanup. It was some dates for various cleanups throughout the city. Four different dates, all in August. I was just wondering during the administration comments if we could possibly get an update either from the chief or for someone from the DPW. Just wondering if those were all completed. And that's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other counselors?
Yeah, Madam President.
Yes, Counsel Williams.
To go along with Counsel Freeman's comments about that property that's adjacent to Steak and Shake, if you walk on the property itself, you will see that is littered with all kinds of debris. Old boats and all kind of stuff, so that could be, that is a hazard. So, but my comments in addition to that is, I've been contacted by business owners and I am in discussion with councils of legal, but I would mention that they are very, they are not happy with some services that are rendered by the city. As soon as we work through the legal jargon and possibly through city legal, then we will address it. But at this time, if they're watching, I just want them to know that it's been noted for the record and it is in the legal hands to be dealt with accordingly. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Madam President.
Yes, Counsel Jones.
Just going to piggyback on Counsel Freeman and Counsel Williams. That property at Steak and Shake has been one that I've been complaining about for three months now. And it's nice to see Mr. Anthony here. Maybe he can address the administrative comments, how we can enforce these code enforcement things. And on July 10th, I turned in six or seven properties that are still problems and a neighbor's going to speak about that later. So I just, it'd be nice if we could figure out a way to work with you and get these done, move on from them. Also, I'd like to leave on a positive note. I'd like to thank the administration for National Night Out and allowing me to ride and what a great opportunity it was and what a great positive impact that it had on the whole city. That's one thing that people talk about all the time is National Night Out and what happens and goes on there. That was pretty special. And also, Public Safety Day, the way it was handled. It was very professional and it was nice to see the policemen and firemen up there. And I know it's all fun and games, but it's nice to see them work so closely together and have such a great relationship. And I'm glad, Chief Hoffman, you finally took it home this time. So, thank you.
Any other counselors?
Madam President. Just briefly, some feedback from people in my district on the repaving project for one of the neighborhoods. Can't say enough, they just had high praises. And also, there was a storm sewer drainage issue that Mr. Salisbury came out and met and then he brought his team out and he remedied the situation in the last rain, the real big rain that we had. Ordinarily, that water would be up two to three feet from the ditch and putting that extra drain in completely kept the water out of the neighborhood's yards to a degree. So, appreciate the work that they did.
Counsel Wells.
Yes, thank you. I have a lady in the audience that's a constituent of mine. She has given me which, and given me multiple copies that I have been turned, passed out to all the counselors of properties that are in my district. I believe all these are in my district. Many of these I have turned in to the code enforcement and apparently none of them have been addressed. Here again, you know, there's been a lot of conversation on tall grass, houses with, are looking terrible, roofs that need replaced. I mean, it just, it goes on and on. I have these pictures here and if someone from DPW would be interested in following up with these, I would be thrilled to give it to somebody that would follow up with doing something with these. The lady there, she has a copy of someone's willing to take them and willing to address these addresses and such, but I'm not sure what else to do. I've turned them in and, you know, then they remain to be undone. We are looking to get a crime watch established in the district, too. I was told today that what my vision was, was to have possibly one crime watch for the district, but I was told that's not feasible, that it's better to have in each individual neighborhood, which is probably going to be about at least a half a dozen different neighborhoods that we're going to have to do individually. But what I had asked the police chief and the crime watch people is that hopefully maybe someone from code enforcement would attend some of these meetings because a lot of these complaints that you hear at crime watch is about these very same things, about these properties that are neglected. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wells. Any other counselors? Okay, next on the agenda is approval of minutes of regular meetings of August 6th and August 15th, 2018.
I'll make a motion that we approve both.
Motion, Counsel Parker, second, Counsel Freeman. All in favor by a show of hands to approve the minutes, August 6th and 15th. Unanimous? Next on the agenda is signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
I can motion to approve.
Motion, Counsel Chevlat.
Second.
Second, Counsel Freeman. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Counsel Williams.
Just wanted to be noted for the record, I had a technical difficulty or technical issue opening up the vouchers, so today I will be abstaining from voting on the vouchers because I was not able to review them and I don't want to, you know, just sign off on something.
Thank you, Counsel Williams. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor by a show of hands. Okay, that's seven. Opposed. Counsel William abstention. So, motion carries. Reports of committees. Code.
Madam President.
Yes, Counsel.
Yes, we met and we had items on the agenda, proposal number seven, 2018, amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana to adopt a new chapter, Title Three, Article Three, to establish standards for private event security and fines for public nuisances. We decided to keep this in code until Counsel Wells, who is the sponsor and council attorney and city attorney and Chief Hoffman get together. And I don't know if they have gotten together as of yet, but we decided to keep this in code until they discuss it further to clean up the verbiage. On proposal number eight, 2018, amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana to reduce the speed limits in the Winfield subdivision, after further discussion, we found through our council advice that we just unanimously denied this. Instead, we are looking to put in some traffic control measures, i.e. stop signs, et cetera, in order to control the traffic in that subdivision. Proposal number nine, 2018, amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana to adopt Chapter 11 of Article Two of Title Four to establish landlord registration program. Here, we were, we recommend denial to the full council, three to one, just based on, just, so, three to one. Proposal number 10, 2018, amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, Chapter Two of Article One of Title Three regarding retirement honor and recognition for members of the City of Lawrence Police Department Reserve Division. We are unanimously in favor of passing this proposal forward. That's my report.
Thank you, Counsel Williams. Finance.
Madam Chair, we had a finance meeting. We only had one item on the agenda, which is proposal number 11, amending the 2018 budget as approved by the common council with respect to the general fund. This was a, we have a situation with our dispatch, I believe, department where we needed a $60,000 allocation because of some retirements. We had three retirements that were not planned that set that department at a shortfall and so we are recommending approval to full council.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Giles. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Proposal number seven, 2018.
Proposal number seven, 2018, introduced by Counsel Wells. A proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana to adopt a new chapter of Title Three, Article Three, to establish standards for private event security and fines for public nuisances.
Okay, that remains in code. Proposal number eight, 2018.
Proposal number eight, 2018, introduced by Counsel Wells. A proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana to reduce the speed limits in the Winfield Heights subdivision.
Okay, this was not, this really was not my understanding. There was no recommendation due to the legality of this not being consistent with state statute.
Right.
So therefore, we need to go ahead and make a motion to withdraw or make a motion, basically, we're going to vote on it and we're going to vote it down. Or you can withdraw it at this time.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense because we need to withdraw and rewrite it for the stop signs. So, yeah, I think withdrawing makes the most sense.
You're going to withdraw it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Wells. Next on the agenda is proposal number nine, 2018.
Proposal number nine, 2018, introduced by Counsel Giles. A proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana to adopt a new Chapter 11 of Article Two of Title Four to establish a landlord registration program.
Okay, this was not recommended by the code committee, three to one. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, I would like to make a motion to approve proposal number, number nine, which is amending the municipal code to include establishing a landlord registration program.
Is there a second? Any other motion?
Questions?
Okay, so I'll second it.
Thank you.
All right, so motion, Counsel Giles, second, Counsel Chavis. Discussion.
Madam President, I tried to discern, looking through the notes of the meeting of the code and the chair mentioned, there's three against it for various reasons. And I understand there was somebody representing a real estate organization. Can you speak in to maybe expand more about why it wasn't recommended?
Yeah, I think that person is here tonight. As a matter of fact, she's from my board, Mybor Homes, and she can adequately speak if Madam President wishes.
So, if you would just hold one moment, I think that what Counsel Chevlat is asking is what were the concerns of the three council members who voted it down? What was your, he wants to understand it so that he can understand, have all the information for his vote.
Right. So, based on what Mybor Homes representative spoke about, we based our decision on that, the ones that voted it down. So that's why I said, if you want, she can explain to you without me trying to paraphrase what she, what her concerns were in reference to this.
Okay. Madam, Madam President.
Hold on one second. I think Counsel Parker wanted to make a couple of comments, being a member of that committee.
Yes, I would also like to say that that evening you were not in attendance and I did have some questions and you were not there. And so, I did base a lot of my information on what was presented to us that evening, if I'm being honest.
Well, Madam Chair, it's a sponsor of it. I like to fight for it. First of all, I was on vacation and was not able to attend, but I did not talk to the young lady that is here day, today, from my board, but I did receive an email from my board, but I also had an extended conversation with another realtor who was against this. We, what I, the effort of this bill is to address the concerns of the citizens that come in here week after week after week complaining about irresponsible, non-accountable landlords. Now, I've done my research on this and I'm not saying it's a silver bullet that's going to solve our problems. I'm also going to admit or acknowledge that the information about the property and who's the owner, it's already there public. We could go through the assessor's office, find out who's getting billed at 2% and dig in and do that. But communities throughout this country have, this is one step to moving us forward in our small community within Marion County to try to put some control on these landlords. Now, I'm going to be honest with you, the gentleman that I spoke to, his real concern and why they don't want us to do this is not this landlord registration. It's the true power that we could take this further. We could make landlords more accountable. We could put inspections in place. I'm not proposing to do that, but I am disappointed that, I'm sorry, I don't mean this with the utmost respect to my counselors, but I thought that this was so vanilla that it didn't have to be there because, and I didn't think that some outside realtor was going to persuade us further than our constituents who come in here every week complaining about landlords. That's the number one complaint in my district. And to me, it's all a corrugated effort. How can we talk about high trash and we don't put in a reg, I mean, high grass and we vote down a registration for landlords because one realtor organization came in here? That's a lobbyist. And so, I'm sorry. I'm very, very disappointed and I hope that we either vote this up or vote this down. And I hope that you guys, you know, you talk about high grass, but come on.
Madam President. Bob, you're on that committee as well, correct? I thought I also remembered being told that Indianapolis has the same program and that they see no impact from this. Now, given, given that information that was shared to me, or shared with me, also had a great impact. I, you know, I had no conversation with you before the meeting to gather more information. You were here, not here that evening and I'm sorry that you're on vacation, so I had to base it on the information that was provided to me that evening.
Right. And so, I will reply to that. The actual ordinance, if you look at it, is literally a paragraph and a half and it is not the most effective thing, but if you do the research, look a little further, it has more effectiveness in smaller communities like ours. Indianapolis does not have the resources to truly enforce it and it is going to be up to our administration to force it, but we have limited power as a councilman to try to address this issue. We have very limited power and so this is one of the avenues. I'm not saying it's going to fix it, but it's a first step and an effort to try to meet the needs of what the people have been asking for.
And that's reasonable. My concern, Madam President, in reference to this, since we didn't forward her opportunity, while we'll go ahead and speak further, is exactly that. What are, what are the control measures that we will implement in order to get the ones that are not currently registered and/or on file to do so? And we already having issues. Secondly, it's not a matter, in my opinion, of not having them accountable as much as it is enforcing the issue of what the people are complaining about from meeting to meeting to meeting. So I think we already have, in the beginning, a start and that is the ability to enforce. And if, without enforcement, then nothing will happen.
How can you enforce something that's not an ordinance yet?
And so, you can enforce it by what is already on the books. We already have ordinances in reference to maintaining your property and et cetera. This is in reference to registry, not enforcement of co-violations. So, we already have that.
Well, Madam, I strongly disagree with the counselor here and I'm really serious about this because this is a number one issue in my district. I mean, one of the number one issues is starting with landlord accountability. We don't have any ordinance on the books here in Lawrence. We don't have anything to afford. All we have is that we could dig in and get a little deeper into the tax rolls and find the information. But what we're saying is, hey, if you're accountable landlord and you want to be in our community, what's wrong with coming and signing yourself up and paying $5 and saying, "I'm here to not be a slumlord"? That's all I'm asking and so that we can then give, give it directly to some of our guys to enforce code enforcement. So it's just one step to get us closer to trying to, before it gets out of hand in our community. That's all.
Any other counselors?
Madam President.
Yes, Counsel Jones.
First of all, thank you for your patience on this and I, hats off to Counsel Giles. I know how passionate you are about this and I wish you were there that night. Things may have went a little different, but I would make a motion that we amend the rules if we're going to vote on this, extend Ms. Everett an opportunity to speak because she did show up that night and I think in all fairness, we should hear her side as well since she did show up and give her the same respect that we gave Counsel Giles.
Okay, so I just want to point out one thing. There are no sides. This is, this is our vote and our decision as a council and I really do not want to have, unless it's priorly arranged, any other outside interest influencing our decision. We have a council attorney here. We have the ordinance in front of us. We've had opportunity to do research outside of this meeting for the past two weeks and so that, that would be what I would strongly recommend.
Madam President, given, there seems to be some questioning, I'm just wondering whether or not Counsel Giles would, I guess it would be up to you, whether or not there was an opportunity to put this back into committee. The only way it can be put back into committee is you have to amend it. You can't put this back in unless you have some changes to it and so, but if you're not interested in that, okay.
I really believe it's so simple and it's so little to change that the recommendation is not our binding vote. We have an opportunity now to make it right. And so, I also going to ask for a roll call vote because this is a major issue in our city and I think if you need to, this is something I'm going to stand on and I think others should too. So I ask for a roll call vote on this, too, Madam President.
Okay, so any further discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Counsel Wells.
I also am on the code committing and I listened to the lady from Mybor. Also, I listened to another landlord that has multiple houses, most of them are in Harrison Park. And he called me and expressed his concern about this proposal when he was made aware of it and he just thought it was unnecessary and unenforceable. And with, you know, the pictures that we have here of, I'm not sure if these are rentals or if they're, or if they're just properties that are owned by the homeowners, but, I mean, we've already got a lot of unenforceable problems and we can't get our code enforcement to take care of these issues. So, why saddle them with one other thing? And here again, the lady from Mybor made the effort to come and address the code committee. The author did not, so I thought maybe it was going to be withdrawn because the author didn't show up. I've never seen that ever the case, but the...
So, so let me make a comment.
I didn't mean to say something.
Let me get some, let me get some order, Counsel Giles. There's, first of all, just for the record, there's no requirement for the sponsor to be there. I think sponsors make every effort to be there because obviously it means something to them to put their name on that, but there is no requirement for it. That is the committee's job. So, the committee had the advantage of hearing what our guests had to say. I've done my research, so I don't, I don't feel it necessary to hear anything. Counsel Chevlat, I don't know, were you in attendance at that meeting?
I looked at the minutes, but I tried to see if I could get it on afterwards. No, so I actually reached out to the sponsor.
Okay, great. Counsel Freeman, were you at that meeting? Okay, do you have any questions as it relates to?
Yes, I looked through the landlord registry and it said $5 per parcel. So if the person has 20 rental homes, would that be $5 per parcel or $5?
$100 total, $5 per parcel.
Okay, and I also didn't see a fee in here for, if they were not in compliance. So if they, we sent out a registered letter 10 days, they have 30 days or 15 days to comply. I didn't see any of that in there. And do we have the manpower, does Department of Public Works have a manpower, like a spreadsheet for a person to go over and get back with us within a three-day turnover period? I mean, I have concerns about that also.
Okay, so I hear two concerns. One is there is no monetary... One is there is no monetary fines detailed in the ordinance for noncompliance. So perhaps that's something, Counselor Giles, for you to consider or not consider, okay? Then the second concern was enforcement. And I'm hearing that a lot is enforcement. So maybe if we could just get, more importantly, the administration's commitment to this.
Madam President? Ma'am? I'm inclined to, as Counselor Chevlot articulated, look at this again. And, you know, Counselor Giles, if.
Okay, so.
Okay, all right.
So we're at an impasse here. I'm going to make it real simple.
We need to be able to figure out stuff the right time, first of all. Guys are playing games. You know? This is.
Okay, so it's been motion and second. Is there any more discussion?
Ask for a roll call vote, please.
Okay. So going to be a roll call vote? So all of those, well, let's see, Counselor Giles?
I'm in favor, yes.
Counselor Wells?
I say no.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to let Kathy do her job. I'm a control freak. Okay. Counselor Chavez? Yes or no?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
No.
Counselor Giles?
Yes, oh, yes.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Chevlot?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
No.
Counselor Williams?
No.
The vote is three to five, is denied. All right, next on the agenda, under unfinished business, is proposal number 10, 2018. Proposal number 10, 2018, introduced by Counselor Jones. A proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, Chapter 2 of Article 1 of Title III regarding retirement honor and recognition for members of the City of Lawrence Police Department Reserve Division. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Counselor Parker?
Second.
Second, Counselor Williams. All in favor by a show of hands? Proposal number 11, 2018.
Proposal number 11, 2018, introduced by Counselors Chevlot and Giles. A proposal for an ordinance amending the 2018 budget as approved by the common council with respect to the general fund.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion, Counselor Chevlot. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Jones. Discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Williams?
So we had the meeting prior to the regular council meeting tonight in reference, and we're talking about the same proposal. I asked a question to the controller that, you know, according to what I read so far, that there was already a proposed increase in the budget for this, what we're about to do. So this would be an additional increase. And I just think that, and we are steadily finding ways to increase budgets and et cetera. But in my opinion, we're not finding ways to hire more police officers. With the amount of monies that's being allocated, budgeted, appropriated, I find it difficult to understand why we can't hire one police officer yearly, to which I asked that question at last year's budget time. Did we have, could we find enough money to hire at least one or two officers a year? And the answer was no. So, but we seem to find money when, to do whatever, and I understand the purpose. But to increase the budget, there's a significant difference to me. Thank you.
Madam, go ahead.
No, please, Tom, please.
Counselor Chevlot?
Madam President, this was in committee. It did get a due pass recommendation. This is to take care of three people that retired from the City of Lawrence that we are obligated to pay out. Because the controller doesn't have a Ouija board to be able to figure out who's going to retire and when, these three people came from the Communications Department. We're obligated to pay them out. This proposal is putting that money back into that budget that we approved last year. Otherwise, that budget will run, or that department will run out of money Octoberish. There'll be no money in the budget to be able to pay these existing employees. So it's not, this is a common occurrence that happens when you have certain things that trigger employees leave. We got pay time and all these hours have built up. So I just want to make that point. This isn't increasing the budget because they overspent. It's increasing the budget because there were three employees that retired, and we're obligated to pay them out their time earned.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
Yes. So we can allocate or appropriate money to replace the money that was already spent. I clearly understand that. But we're asking to increase the budget. That's what we're asking, that's what this ordinance, or this proposal is doing. And, thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor.
We are increasing the budget for 2018, the existing budget that we passed in the fall of 2017. We're just adding to 2018 just to make it even, so everybody gets paid. It's very simple. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Wells?
Been on this council now, well, three years, I guess. And it's, I know these are occurrences that do happen, that need to happen from time to time. I know that in being on this council, it's a rare occasion that I see that the administration comes after we have already passed the budget for additional funds. During the course of the year, I see that there are new cars that are bought. I'm sure they're probably leased or however. My point being is it is a rare occasion, and I agree with Counselor Williams, it's a rare occasion that the administration comes to this council for additional appropriations. And, you know, I would like to think, is not being a member of the Finance Committee, but I would like to think that we are being a little more fine-tuned with allowing the budget to pass where rarely ever, or if ever, that the administration ever needs to come to this council for additional monies. It looks to me that the administration does quite well with the budgets that we set forth. And, you know, it's just, it's just a curious thing to me that so many things have been bought and so much money has been spent, and yet there's ever been additional appropriations until now. But that's all I have to say on that.
Okay, and so for the record, Controller, how many times this year have you come to us for an appropriation? I just want that for my information.
This is the first time this year.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Wells?
Once again, didn't mean to humor my constituent, or my fellow counselor, but that was my point. Or at least, I think that was the point I was trying to make, is that, you know, did we, do we not have this budget fine-tuned enough that maybe on occasion that, you know, the administration might need to come to us for additional appropriations? Apparently not. And that was my point, and I didn't mean to, you know.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. No problem. I would just ask that, I don't, I don't want to have to say this, but I am, everybody up here needs to have respect and dignity and a certain level of professionalism. And if we have issues or concerns towards one another, then we need to have those discussions offline after the council meeting. I would just ask that everybody be respectful and abide by that, please. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I do, please. It's my interpretation of the budget, being the chair of the Finance Committee. And we just can't applaud a guy who's getting recognized for our city, our budgets. We're getting awarded in our department for our city being strong because our budget is so thorough and it's so precise that the only time our controller had to come back to us is because we had some retirements. So that's why I think that this is a compliment to how well our budget, and so all of our expenses, the cars, the different things that have been purchased throughout the years, is budgeted. So everything that'll be bought in 2019 is in this proposed budget. So I, it does kind of get under my skin that the book is here, we're at the end of the year, and the only reason our controller's coming to us is because we had an unfortunate, I mean, not unfortunate, separation, and our city's in the best financial shape it's been in many, many years, and I'm proud of it and I applaud it. So that's why I feel that way.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, great. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is it? Oh, we already have a motion? Okay, we've been discussing so long, I've lost track.
Parker and Williams.
So motion, Counselor.
Sorry, Chevlot and Jones.
Chevlot and Jones.
Motion? Counselor Chevlot, second. Counselor Jones?
Counselor Chevlot's motion, Counselor Jones, second.
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor by a show of hands? Oppose? Motion passes. New business. Proposal number 12, 2018.
Proposal number 12, 2018, introduced by Counselor Parker. A proposal for an ordinance amending municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana regarding discipline and promotions.
Okay, that will be assigned to code.
Proposal number 13, 2018, introduced by Counselor Williams. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana establishing an advanced curfew for minors in the City of Lawrence.
That's assigned to code. Proposal number 14, 2018.
Proposal number 14, 2018, introduced by Counselors Chevlot and Giles. A proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the Police Department and the Fire Department for the year 2019.
That will be assigned to finance. Proposal number 15, 2018.
Proposal number 15, 2018, introduced by Counselors Chevlot and Giles. A proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the City of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2019.
That will be assigned to finance as well. Proposal number 16, 2018.
Proposal number 16, 2018, introduced by Counselors Chevlot and Giles. A proposal for an ordinance transferring unused and unencumbered tax levy funds to the general fund.
That will be assigned to finance as well. Proposal number 17, 2018.
Proposal number 17, 2018, introduced by Counselors Chevlot and Giles. A proposal for an ordinance amending municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana regarding employee benefits and overtime.
That will be assigned to code. Hold on, I'm going to assign that to finance. That's going to go to finance. Proposal number 18, 2018.
Proposal number 18, 2018, introduced by Counselors Chevlot and Giles. A proposal for an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2019 budget year.
That will be assigned to finance.
And before, at one least, could you sign the cover sheets? Because I didn't get, between meetings, we didn't have time to do that.
A lot of paperwork to sign up here before we leave. Next on the agenda is comments of the administration.
Going to be very brief, I promise, because we're going to hand it over to Counselor Fenwick, or Controller Fenwick, to presentation of the budget. I do want to give a public shout out to two men who have put in a lot of hours and a lot of time in the last four weeks, and prob, maybe not put in enough credit for what they've been doing. But Jim Henning and Paul Warner have been putting in a ton of hours to try to get caught up. I will admit, we were behind. We're trying to get caught up. These two guys can't work any harder than they're already working. So just congratulations to those two guys, I'm glad to have them.
Thank you.
So similar to last year, obviously, the, every council member should have received a copy of the 2019 proposed budget. I believe that was about a week ago. We also have prepared citizens' guides to what is proposed in the budget, which we'll hand out here in a minute. And then, similar to last year, we have a video that we'd like to display that, you know, presents our 2019 budget proposal. So Jimmy, you want to bring that up? I'm pressured, Jimmy.
For the third consecutive year, we are proposing a financially sound and fiscally responsible budget that will pave the way for essential city services. With any further ado, I want to announce Controller Jason Fenwick.
I am pleased to introduce the fiscal year 2019 budget proposal for the City of Lawrence. This proposal is a sound and responsible fiscal plan that will enable the city to serve the interests of its citizens and visitors. This budget will provide appropriate resources to serve our community and provide continued public safety protection, maintain our roads and streets, invest in our park system, and continue upgrading our long-term capital needs while striving to enhance the overall quality of life for the citizens of our community. This budget proposal will also become our submittal to the Government Finance Officers' Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Program. We are pleased to have earned this award for 2018, our second consecutive year of earning this distinction, and look forward to submitting the fiscal year 2019 budget for consideration.
Here is an overview of the mayor's 2019 budget priorities, which will accomplish the goal of paving the way to enhanced quality of life in Lawrence. Continued emphasis on funding for public safety. Our proposed budget includes $24.5 million in total public safety funding. This represents a total increase of $14.1 million. This represents a total increase of $14.1 million since 2016, a 26.7% increase. Police Department Funding. Total police funding has increased $4.5 million since 2016, or 23.4%. Our budget proposal includes funding for the purchase of additional police fleet upgrades, over 35 vehicle replacements since 2016. 3% salary increase for all merit officers. Continued funding for body cameras. Purchase of new technology for enhanced search and rescue and enhanced law enforcement efforts. Continued emphasis on funding for officer training, over 200% increase in funding for training since 2016. We are also anticipating the grand opening of our new police headquarters in 2019. Fire Department Funding. Total funding for the fire department has increased by $9.5 million since 2016, a 29.2% increase. Our budget proposal includes delivery of a new engine for Station 36. With this delivery, the fire department is nearing upgrading its entire fleet in the last three years. 3% salary increase for all firefighters. Purchase of new technology for enhanced search and rescue. Unprecedented commitment to our street department. Total funding for the street department has nearly doubled since 2016, increasing by $5.6 million. Our budget proposal includes additional funding for paving, over $5 million since 2016. 100% increase in funding for sidewalk repairs. Additional funding for streetlight repairs, over $250,000 in the last two years. Additional fleet and equipment upgrades, funding to increase staffing. Emphasis on funding for parks. Total park funding has increased $1.6 million since 2016, nearly a 70% increase. Paving the way in 2019 includes funding for new playground equipment at Explorer Park. Funding for resurfacing Harmon Way at Community Park. Additional improvements to the Sterit Center. Funding for the preparation of a park's master plan. New mowers, new maintenance vehicle, funding for additional facilities improvements. Emphasis on quality economic development. Meyer's Plastic will be opening in 2019 at the corner of 59th Street and Sunnyside, transforming a property and creating 68 new jobs in Lawrence. Our continuing developing Trades District will accommodate a variety of companies and industries.
With all we have proposed to accomplish in 2019, we are paving the way for the long-term financial stability of the city with a fiscally responsible budget. Our proposal is balanced and also achieves an important milestone, maintaining a General Fund operating reserve of at least 20% of budgeted expenditures. By way of comparison, the state of Indiana's operating reserve is 11.3% of expenditures. It is extremely important to maintain this operating reserve as it provides a safety net against unexpected emergencies and potential shifts in revenue forecasts. It also allows the city to discontinue interim borrowing with tax anticipation notes for cash flow needs, providing substantial interest cost savings to the General Fund. The city can also now proactively manage its short-term investments, generating interest income, a new revenue source. And finally, unreserved funds above the 20% reserve can be released and used for one-time capital investments. With our 2019 budget proposal, we are pleased to release nearly $500,000 in unreserved funds for this purpose. Paving the way toward our long-term financial stability also includes addressing our long-term liabilities. The city continues to face a major challenge when funding post-employment benefits to our retiring employees. This budget proposal includes funding and ordinances to mitigate these liabilities. We are only beginning to address this challenge, and it will take several more years of diligence to build these reserves.
The 2019 budget will be introduced at the city of Lawrence Common Council Meeting on Tuesday, September 4th at 6:30 p.m. A public hearing has been scheduled for October 1st, and adoption is scheduled for October 17th. The budget calendar, along with the 2019 budget proposal, is available online at our
Thank you. Any other comments of the administration? Okay, great, thank you. Sue Reed. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Sue Reed, 4769 Vernon, and I'm the one that gave you the packets tonight. I have lived in Lawrence for 43 years, and I used to be proud to say I live in Lawrence. I can't say that anymore. I had to put up with them, I don't know if you guys haven't been around long enough to know about the McGowan property on Vernon. I feel like that's where we're back at again. We have so much problem in our, with our codes not being enforced, and I'm, quite honestly, I'm a little sick of it. Matter of fact, I read the city of, the Lawrence Lift, and it says, "City focus on cleaning up the streets." Well, I think that's cleaning up the property too, and if you don't force cleanup of the property, we're not going to have our streets cleaned up either. And I'm tired. Bobby's turned them in, Rick's turned them in, I've talked to Renee. They were all turned in prior to July 10th because Linda Tree did turn them in. I mean, I have been fighting with this house at 4742 Vernon for four years. I don't understand people, why they buy homes and then don't want to keep them up. I have put $20,000 in my house this last year, not by choice, but I have to, because I need a new roof and I put new windows in. I'm not going to get my money out of my house because you guys are letting my property value go down by not enforcing these codes. Something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Lacey Everett.
Ms. Klein. Linda Moore, at 4909 Leon Drive. I want to thank everybody who did help and participate in National Night Out. It was a very important night. I know ours was organized very quickly, but I think it was successful. I've had several people come to me about speeding in our neighborhood, and stop signs are, stop signs are not fixing it. Over on Catherine, there are a lot of little children. That particular street is a little bit more narrow than some of the others, I'm told. And some of the same speeders that come down Leon Drive are also going down Catherine. And I've got at least several people that are very upset with that situation. And we can have all the stop signs out there that we want, they're not yielding, and our intersections become roundabouts and U-turns. I also was thinking that a crime watch should be established in each district, and especially to begin with, having the larger area would at least help bring the people in until we could probably divide it up into smaller areas. But those crime watches need to be out there in the different districts. We go back to revitalizing the older areas. The budget video was beautiful, but the only sign of the older area was basically the parade route for 4th of July. We saw paving in other areas, and, you know, we need to revitalize the older areas. We've had large trash sometimes sitting out for a month, and you call on it, well, that's been noted. But it took a month to get the sofas off of 49th Street because they had to wait till the next big trash day because they were put out the previous trash day and not picked up, the previous big trash day. And in that video, I saw nothing about animal shelters or anything we're doing with animal control to improve our dog issues and animals that are running. We had another issue this weekend where we did have a quick response, but we had a large dog that was all over the neighborhood, and it had children very scared. So, I mean, these are all areas that need to be addressed. If we're going to continue to upgrade our city and want it to look good, the neighborhoods have to look good. And those of us who have worked on our houses and worked on our neighborhoods can't fix it for everybody else. And we can't make anybody else do anything because they just kind of sit back and say, "We don't have to." So, you know, you can pick and choose from one of those items we need to address, but I really would like to see some changes coming up. I'd like to see some proposals out there that actually address, in a workable way, what we can do. Brookhaven is probably going to start having an neighborhood association established to try to address some of the items that aren't pure crime watch items. Not sure how much, you know, participation we will get with that, but when I've got people calling me who I don't know and telling me, "We need to do something," then we know that it's pretty bad. And the, you know, I don't have answers. I've proposed answers, we kind of shrug them off. So, but I'm like Sue. I've put massive amounts of money in my house. I will not get a return on it if I sell it. I will probably get half of what I have in that house. And I don't want to be forced out my neighborhood because we've got unresponsible people. So, thank you.
We don't have any more signed up for citizens' comments?
Madam President, I'd like to make it a matter of public record that we adjourn our meeting tonight in remembrance of Jason Streeter. For those of you who are able to go to his service, there's no doubt that man was talented well beyond what I thought, but I wanted to just thank you for this opportunity to adjourn in remembrance of Jason Streeter.
I'd ask that we stand and do that in silence for about 30 seconds.
We're adjourned.